Okay, the recording's on. Okay, called a Tremont Hunting Board meeting of May 17th, the order at 6:00 PM. Roll call, we have Brett with him, we have Beth Gott, we have Jeff Young, myself, Mark Good, and Lawson has called and said he won't be able to make it tonight, so I'll take a motion to excuse his absence.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion to second to excuse Lawson Wilson, any discussion, hearing none? Call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes, anybody say anything to the minutes please? Six, Old Business Pointyhead. Motion by Lawson, relocate cabins 14 and 15, wasn't there only one cabin that was moved?
No, two.
Were there two?
I thought there were two.
I didn't have time to look.
What was the question?
How many cabins were moved in Pointyhead? One or two? Okay, so that's correct then, okay. Good. Then I didn't see any problems. Motion to accept the minutes then?
So moved.
Motion second to accept the minutes, approve the minutes of April 26th. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Upstanding.
Upstanding, okay. I put this on just for discussion, I talked to John about it briefly, the solar farm thing is maybe to get ahead of the curve, that it's something that we might want to include in our ordinances. Towns throughout the state are struggling with these things and kind of developing standards. John put one thing in, this Maine agriculture conservation forestry thing, I also found this other thing put out by, I think it was Maine Auto Bond and somebody else. Yeah, Maine Auto Bond with review feedback and support from Maine based solar developers, blah, blah, blah. So I don't know if anybody had a chance to look over any of that, just I don't expect to actually come to any decisions tonight, but if we're going to move ahead with something, we should at least decide to look into it and if we're going to get it on a warrant for the November election, we would need to come back to selectmen with something by the middle of August, I think 15th is their second meeting in August. And I don't really see it affecting, you know, rooftop or, you know, anybody's small scale type stuff, this would be more for commercial, the bigger farms are just selling the power to the consumers.
Can they have them buy the transfer station out, out back there?
We do have one there, yeah.
Well, I mean, yeah, but the one, I guess I didn't even see the one here.
Oh, you mean the one at EMR, yes. I don't think that's online yet. That's why I was hoping Lawson would be here, because I think he knows a lot about that. Does anybody else know?
No, I know it's a big one, I mean, you can definitely...
Yeah.
If someone walked into John's office tomorrow with an application for solar farm, what do we do with it?
Well, I would think some of the land use ordinances, some of the site plan would apply, but frankly, I don't know which ones.
Would it be permitted?
Yeah, I would think it'd be permitted, yeah.
Well, I don't know, I mean, that's a good question. I have to, you have to think about that, right? Because certainly, I guess it depends on what zone it's in, because in the...
Well, there's zone, yeah.
In the joint zone, if you will, the residential business, it actually lists the types of commercial uses. I mean, that's how I've looked at it, I mean, it has the types of things you can do.
Right.
So from my perspective, if it isn't there, you can't do it. I don't have it right in front of me right now, I didn't know where we were gonna... But I think, at least the way I've looked at the, you know, it has campgrounds, has definitions for the things you can do.
You're talking about the table uses?
Let me pull it up here.
What, John?
In the land use ordinance, in the land use table, item number... C says "commercial" with the solar farm, I think they're trying to change the word to "farm," to "field," a solar field.
Okay.
Because farm has a, it's a misnomer.
Yeah, it has agriculture, agricultural reference. Yeah, so "commercial" is allowed in residential business though, with planning board approval. I just, do you remember the cell tower that went up on Kellytown Road?
Yeah.
Okay, if I recall, that going up is what spurred our wireless telecommunications ordinance.
I believe so.
Right? And so we reacted to that rather than developing the ordinance first, right?
And the history of cell towers was litigated heavily as to whether it committed or not, so I think we tried, once it started, get something in so we had some protections as to what was going on within oral litigation that went on of communities trying to stop them and not being successful.
Right.
The reason I ask is it permitted, is when I read over the stuff and I thanked you, Mark, John for providing it, my head spun.
I don't think we need to do that.
But it did point out to me while my head was spinning, how complicated this subject is and how many moving parts there are and how much we probably, I'll speak for myself, I don't know about it and feel inadequate to really draft something. But the same token, sitting on the planning board, I worry about not being prepared of having something in place and whether we consider having a stopgap ordinance put in until we can get it better.
Are you suggesting the M-word? Moratorium?
No, I'm not. That's gotten me in trouble with the P-word. No, this time I suggested an actual statute. What I'm saying is, I mean, moratoriums usually come in when you have a pending crisis anyway on the horizon, but here we have, we're not at all prepared for someone to come in and ask, and should we put almost a stopgap no at the moment until we can put in ordinances that are realistic? I mean, I can think of...
Can we do that?
I don't know how that would work, do you have an idea? I mean, to me, that's a moratorium is what you're really suggesting.
Well, moratoriums on the state law got the six month life and the renewal of six months, here we could just say, just like Mount Desert says, no campgrounds, we could say no solar farms. I'm not saying this is what we should do, I'm just raising it as an approach because we're not prepared to address it.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I have certainly a lot of thoughts as to what we wouldn't want to happen in, you know, someone just, you know, we had, it was just 700 acres being plowed over in somewheres upstate Maine, which is one square mile, and nothing stopped that from happening.
And is there a big one going in, Bar Harbor, somewhere town hill?
Well, that's what I was going to bring up, more close to home, they're leveling 10 acres of trees.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, some people are saying, okay, we're trying to save solar power, to save the earth, though eliminating the trees that are carbon absorbers at the same time. So it is, it has got this catch 22 situation to it, but we're not prepared at all for it. And I drive, we all drive, well, I like taking the coast to Augusta, they've got all those ones up here along the highway there.
They do now?
On the right hand side, just as you're getting down to that traffic light area on Route 3 going, if you go down, there's two or three large fields set up on hills and so forth. And I know that technology now, it used to be they thought solar farms could go just on flat land, now they realize they can go up sides of hills and design them in all sorts of ways. It could be a real eyesore in town for the island if we weren't prepared. That's what I've just...
Right.
You know, I'm not knowing it, I'm like, we should be ready to be able to handle it when it comes in.
You know, if you can write the ordinance so that an individual could do it for their own personal use, commercial or residential, for, yeah, but for commercial and residential, but not for the purpose of selling it to...
Of commercial operation?
Right.
Right. And it's only because it could be a real eyesore for the island, from the water, from the land, from wherever you see it, you can go up one of the sides of hills with it.
It damages the land terribly.
Personal, like, my neighbor, John at the Bubyard, he has solar panels on the roof of one of his buildings.
Yeah.
And, well, I can't think of the name, Skip...
Oh, Wilson?
Skip Wilson, he's got them on his business there too, so you would allow that sort of commercial, we're talking about the big fields like he's saying.
Yes.
It's just damages so much, I've seen it.
And the other thing, the mistake Maine's making generally, not we're going to solve problems in Maine, but valuable farmland is being covered with solar panels at the moment because, well, it's not being farmed in the farm. And there's actually a map out for this island of where valuable farmland, even though it's not presently being farmed necessarily, but throughout the town of Tremont, there's areas that have been located that have good soil for farming. We don't want to lose that for future generations. And that's the sort of concern, or knocking down a whole woods, forest area, that's what I'm worried about.
So if I hear you, you think we should go ahead and develop standards, but you think in the meantime, we should do something to curtail these applications?
Yes. Putting out there, thinking about, believe me.
Yeah. We don't have to solve it all tonight, what do you think, John? Since you're the code enforcement officer.
I've had a inquiry.
I knew that bug in that office worked for me.
Do you know where GAC Road is?
Oh, yes, yeah, that's, you know, the Murphy property, the Murphy swamp right there? What you said, Murphy swamp before, was it legally drained or was drained, I mean?
Or the house that they evicted, like putting the backhoe through the wall?
Yeah.
What did go through that wall?
The backhoe, fuck it.
Wow.
Renters weren't paying to rent it.
Self-help.
Self-help, yeah. Allegedly.
That was supposed to be a community solar array.
Doesn't work that great, I mean, not, can't...
Never happened.
Oh, when was this?
Couple of years ago.
Oh, years ago, okay, I thought this was...
We feel it knocking on your door now.
I gotta tell you, I agree with Jeff, you know, it's interesting because, you know, they're, I think some would consider them green and environmentally friendly and we have cars now that are electric and, you know, trying to generate electricity, but I think they're just eyesores, I think that, you know, I just, they take up so much land, they just look terrible and I just, I didn't even think about, you cut trees down, it's sort of a little bit of self-defeating.
Yeah.
Oh, it's really...
So I'm sure, you know, I could see it if you're putting it on like the tops of buildings, things that are already kind of, you know, so it's an additional use to something that's already kind of a development, but to just clear land for solar arrays, ah, you know, I mean, I'm kind of fine with it, like by a transfer sta, like no one cares, right? It's by a transfer station or, you know...
Well, it's on the old landfill, so, which is what we did out here.
I don't think anything can be done on that land.
Right.
Permanently.
It's a secondary, you're trying to continue to make some use, but when you take land that's otherwise could be used for something else and you stick a bunch of panels on it, I don't know, it's just a field. And, you know, we're on island, you know, there's only so much, you know, so much.
Right, right.
I'd be in favor of home only, so, that's just me.
Okay.
Personal use only.
But I know that, you know, we're gonna, there's other folks that would probably have a different view.
Right.
People on the select board and, I mean, I think climate to thrive, I think, isn't that their kind of whole...
Well, that's why I was hoping Lawson would be here because he was...
I'd like to hear his view, because I, you know, because I see them and I'm like, huh, you know, and you see the windmills and, you know, it's like, I get it.
And speaking of windmills, I thought for sure we had a wind tower ordinance, but we don't, so...
Uh-oh.
But we do have, we do have the wireless communications tower ordinance, which is separate from our regular ordinance.
So, a suggestion.
Yeah.
Did we make a organic consensus of whether you wanted incorporated into the land use ordinance or do you want a standalone ordinance?
You're talking about the telecommunications tower one or you're talking about the solar one? Okay, you know, I was gonna bring that up too. I don't see why it should be separate. I don't know what anybody else thinks.
I don't want to speak for anyone else on the board, but it seems to be a consensus, there's some resistance to having our lands plowed over and covered with panels. And so I think we're, again, coming back to how I opened this was a stopgap, if we're gonna say a no type thing, just incorporate it into our, into our ordinances, if we're gonna start having ordinances that are 18 pages long of how to do the job, that might want to be a standalone.
And while we're at it, I think the telecommunications one should be put in there too. Why not?
No reason. The only reason it's not in the land use ordinance is because the wireless is kind of a unique...
Means the cloud?
It has its own...
I haven't figured that out yet.
I haven't either.
Okay.
It scares me.
Say, how many solar farms do you think you're gonna get in Tremont?
Well, that's a good question, you know, we got that ordinance on the telecommunications tower, so we haven't had another one application since.
I just think we better cover our butts.
Yeah, I, yeah. I'd rather be safe than sorry, I'd rather be proactive than reactive.
Someone wants to put it on a business, their business or their house, fine.
And I think I looked, this model regulation does carve out...
Yeah.
Roof mounted, small scale, so essentially the home occupation version of solar.
And even though that goes into the grid, it's, you know... You have solar at your house, don't you?
Yep. Should I recuse myself?
The guy with solar in the house doesn't want solar panels.
I think, and I actually, I'm getting used to seeing rooftops, you can't see them on our house because of the back of the house, so I don't know how much I love it, who's on the front, but nobody looks at the back of our house, so...
Yep.
But, and I know our friend Musk, whatever his name is, who's got too much money, I mean, he's coming up with shingles that look, are solar panels, you're not even see that they're there, so roofing shingles, these solar panels, not even, so there is technology out there that have these bulky things up the roof, but at least you're not covering ground and...
Right, right.
I mean, you go to Hannaford, wouldn't it be, those of us own dogs, wouldn't it be great to go to Hannaford with your dog and have shade someplace to park your car so you can run in and get something? Well, if you put solar panels over parking lots, you don't have to plow them and you have shade.
I've seen things where they're saying the panels should be high enough off the ground so that animals, cows or whatever can graze.
The wrong plants grow under them.
Yeah, probably. So anyway, anything else or how do we want to move forward here?
Well, you know, I wonder if it's something... I wonder if it's something, well, I'm just throwing it out there, I wonder if it's, I don't think this question was asked in the survey, like the planning survey.
Yeah.
I mean, we either raise it and just decide that we're gonna address it and come up with some proposed regulations or is there a way to get it before the select board and ask people what they think, it feels like, other than just having them vote on it, you know, I don't know, we could have a public...
Well, you have to have a public hearing anyway, yeah, any ordinance standards.
Do we need two, one for us and one for the select board?
Yeah, when they put it on the warrant, yeah.
Yeah, so it'll be, it'll be well aired.
Yeah, and Jesse thought it was a good idea when I mentioned it to him. Maine Municipal Magazine just did a story in there on towns that are developing standards throughout the state, probably seen some things in the Van Gogh Daily, and I think the Elsework, there was a proposal up there, I don't know what's going on, and they were, they were trying to quickly develop some standards.
I have a suggestion that if you were to determine whether you wanted a standalone or incorporate it in the land use, I would develop something for the planning board to...
If we go the route of, you know, we're not really gonna allow them, I think you just incorporate it in the sort of, you say, they're not permitted.
It's a one-liner, it's a few definitions.
Yeah, they're not permitted, however, you can, you know, you have to define whatever small scale is on your house for personal use or something, but I mean, it's a couple, it's really not that long, but I think before we propose that, we want to get some feedback, or would we just go to that now and I...
Yeah, yeah, well, you know.
Well, Lawson could throw a lot of light on this for us as to approaches, I would assume.
I'm sorry?
Lawson could throw a lot of light on it.
Yeah.
I work at another town that has a house, it's for their own use, but they're on this concrete pedestal and they built this frame, so they're probably 20 by 40, and there's two of them, and there's a clear cut to support these two.
So you're saying people can do, they can, because even with the home ones, I think you can sell it back, right?
Yeah, it goes, basically it goes into the grid and you get credit for it.
Right, so if someone even with a home one, theoretically, if you get five acres, we have, we'd have to, you know, if somebody could put a five acre one in the backyard, say, it's for my house, you mean, you gotta...
Is that where you're getting at?
I believe there's no advantage to exceed your use of your house.
Okay.
We used revision to put ours in and they track your last six months of...
Try to match it, pretty much.
And try to match it, because once you exceeded the power, you're just giving a gift to the power.
Power company. Okay, so there's no financial incentive to do anything like that?
No, and they slightly, you slightly oversize it only because during the winter you don't get the same amount, I mean, during summer you pull nothing off the grid, during the winter, for three months, I need the grid.
Right, right, right.
But I have credits left over, use the credits up, then you're paying electric bill like everyone else.
Yeah. I'd wonder if we'd want to accept town property, we'd want to create an exception for that.
Well, Bar Harbor's using, Bar Harbor uses their town off of Crooked Road, their roofs over there have all panels off, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I haven't been over there, I don't know exactly where it is.
Right across from Birchback. The town yard, I think that's where they...
Birch, oh, 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 I know where you mean, on, yeah, that was McQuin's Pit.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they have some corrugated type, I think they call them corrugated metal buildings, I don't, I'm an engineer, but the roofs are all holding panels for town at Bar Harbor.
Okay, well, I thought you were talking about the solar farm where they cut all the trees.
No, I'm talking about the, what had on town property.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Now, our system out here powers this place and the school, I guess.
Goes back to the grid.
Yeah, back to the grid, yeah, but, you know, sort of.
I think we sort of have alignment here.
Yeah, I mean, I'm torn because I want to really encourage renewable energy, but you guys have some good points here.
Well, there's things you can do as far as commercial buildings already exist, you can put in, God forbid, tax incentives for commercial businesses to use their roofs and make them available.
Yeah, yeah.
Stephen Stanley's gonna put solar panels on his roof, that building is 100 feet long.
In Southwest?
Yeah. Yeah, we wouldn't prohibit a business that, you know, that does something else from putting it on their building, I think, we'd have to figure that out.
Yeah. In my mind, this would just be for, I use the term farm, even if field, I guess, whatever.
Ground located solar.
Yeah, ground.
Yeah, that's just designed to sell into the grid or power the, feed into the grid and consumers will pay them a certain amount to get the electricity, just like it's working over at the landfill in Southwest.
Yeah, that's on landfill, it's the same thing we did.
That's not a town one, that's put in by one of the companies and you buy into it, you pay, and it's like several thousand dollars you pay upfront just to buy into a share of the power. I looked into it one time and I don't remember all the details, Lawson would know, because he's the one that told me about it. And you probably get those things in the mail occasionally, is it revision or something?
Yeah, SunDog, I think we did the towns here in revision, the two big players in the area.
Yeah, and that's not just for the home, there are some companies that are advertising to sell, you buy into their solar array or whatever you want to say, right, so, yeah.
One of the issues that have come up is that Versa Power doesn't have the capacity for these big solar farms, so what they end up doing is have to run new power, you know, poles taller to accommodate some of this.
Yeah. Yeah, the infrastructure is not prepared for that or electric cars as much. Well, you, can we just, as a consensus, just agree to look into this further and explore maybe options to find out, the public, I don't know how to do that unless we held a public hearing on it, which we could do, we can hold a public hearing without having anything to present, right?
Yeah. Yeah, and we can also, I'm trying to think, when we're gonna do the comprehensive plan, I think it's probably too far out.
Yeah.
We're gonna do some things, public outreach, probably this fall?
Yeah, that's what it was, this fall, yeah. Maybe August, but I'm gonna guess it's gonna be September, yeah. If we're gonna get anything on the warrant or we can wait till next year, that's the other thing. I don't know.
I'm fine with moving forward.
So is that good enough for everybody? Anything else? Good points, thanks, everybody. I will say, it might be interesting to see what rumors go on as a result of this, because one of the rumors, I guess, were the land use ordinance that just passed, by the way, 251 to 79, was that it included that all new construction must have electric charging stations for cars.
Where did that come from?
I don't know, but it was going around, apparently it wasn't that widespread, but you know what people say, you know?
For private residences or...
Yeah, any new construction was supposed to have an electric charging station. And they were all campground standards that were changed. Anyway.
Wow.
And so, you know, the LWO, like I said, passed, the new one, you have copies there in the site plan, new copy there, that also is like 252 to 74. John, do we have anything about, know anything about Pointyhead?
Pointyhead?
They got, they disappeared quickly the last meeting, after...
Yeah, well, they said they're gonna maybe revise their plan.
After that left-hand corner was brought up.
Yeah, after what?
That left-hand, what lens, when they...
Yeah. So we'll see, they haven't come back to you, said anything, the guy was gonna, one guy was gonna do the internal poll study.
The water plant review, right? Is that correct?
Yeah.
To review campgrounds in both ordinances.
In both ordinances? Oh, yeah, okay, the LWO and the site plan.
Pointyhead, you're gonna review the standards in the land use and add the site plan review.
Yeah.
So in the site plan review, I think there's something in there about timeframes... So, in the site plan review, I think there's something in there about timeframes.
There is, yes, you're right.
So, if they don't get it here in a certain period of time, they'll have to submit a new application, which would follow their-
The new-
The new standard.
Regulations, yeah.
I think they did that the last time they were before us. I think that happened the last time on their application for us. I think 30 days were, I think it was 30 days.
I believe you're right.
Page, page five, I think, number two, within 30 days of the receipt of formal site plan review application.
You know, there's a 30-day, if you find the application incomplete, right?
Incomplete at first, then we find it complete with the, at the last meeting, with the addition of that, the moving of those cabins.
So, it says on page six of the site plan review ordinance, as soon as the planning board determines the application is complete, the board shall notify the applicant writing and place the item on the agenda for a substant- substantial review within 30 days or at the next scheduled planning board, whichever is later.
I thought they were gonna do that vernal pool wetlands, they were gonna complete it, because they needed to do it in May. Wasn't that it?
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna do it.
Pool assessment is, time is over for that.
Well, we'll see, that's, it's not on the agenda here, so.
April with the beginning.
I don't wanna get into too much detail with it, but, so we haven't heard anything from them.
Catflies have hatched.
Okay. Any, anybody have any other issues or anything to say? Guess not? Take a motion to set the date for the next meeting? June 7th, 6 o'clock here. Somebody wants to make a motion?
I'll just move.
Sorry. I've had 10 minutes, but I have any-
Not good on TV tonight, guys?
Celtics play at 8:30.
Okay, and do I have a second? Then I'll second it. Motion to second the set, the date for next meeting, June 7th, 6 o'clock here in the Harvey Kelly Meeting Room in the Town Office. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, take a motion to adjourn at 6:34.
I'll move that to second.
All right.
Third.
Okay, motion to second to adjourn at 6:34. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Yep.